Hi Danville, Alan Shilch, Chief of Police for the town and we're 10-8 and in service, which means we're here to safeguard the lives, rights and property of everyone we serve. And we do that in an effort to make people's lives better. This is a live show, so if you have questions, go ahead and throw them in the chat. We're watching both Facebook and YouTube. And we will try to answer any questions live during the show. If we can't get to them during the show, I'll throw it in the chat afterwards. If you missed it, last night was a pretty good council meeting. Our town manager, our mayor, vice mayor and council members, they had been corresponding back and forth with PG&E. And they actually brought the vice president of PG&E as well as one of their PIOs, one of their liaisons out to there. And what I would encourage you to do is go to the town's website and replay that video because it was a pretty good video. Also during that video, after the PG&E, I went and I presented my quarterly report. We'll, we'll go over a little bit of this today, so you don't necessarily have to watch the council meeting for that. Cause I'll, I'll go over some of the statistics and the things for that. But I do, there was something that was brought up last, yes, last night about PG&E and communication and how can you stay connected? And so we actually added a little page to our evergreens here. And I want you to know, there's a link down in the description where you can log in. So if you look in the upper right-hand portion of the screen, you can sign up and log in so that you can receive alerts. There's also some pretty good information, not unlike that we push all the time, but on how you can be prepared, what you can do if the power goes out, what you can do prior to the power going out. And I actually clipped one of their shots on there. If you look in the graphic, the center part, it says, practice opening and closing your garage door manually. We actually had someone that called into the police department and said, or didn't say, but requested that if the power goes out, that an officer goes to their house when they need their garage door open. So they can, that the officer could open the garage door so they can get out. As much as we'd love to do that, as much as we'd love to provide kind of that white glove service, we just don't have the resources. And part of what my job is, the chief of police is to let everybody know and set reasonable expectations for what you can expect should any kind of a disaster happen. I know that right now we're looking at power outages. I know that three years ago, we were looking at pandemics and whatnot, but that's why we always ask, please download this FEMA All Hazards Guide. Be prepared. This gives you tips on what to do today. So in, in the example of the PG&E list, practice opening and closing your garage. What happens if the power goes out? How do you manually open and close your garage door? Some garage doors have like a lock on the side. Some you have to pull the red emergency handle and, and others, you know, you might have to completely undo the lock. And there's a key that you put in. So you have to know how your garage door works. The alternative is just make sure one of your cars is parked outside. So if there is a hazard, if there's something where the power goes out, if there's a fire, if there's some event that's happening where you need to get in your car and leave, your car's already outside, or at least one of them is. I know for me, we always have at least one car parked out front. But as always, download that FEMA All Hazards Guide. It'll give you some tips on what you can do ahead of a catastrophic event and what you can do during it. And then how you stay connected and how you rebuild after. Also you gotta know what's happening. So sign up for our community warning system. Go to the sheriff's website and you can, there is a link down below. You just click through and you can sign up to opt in for that communication. Also download the wildfire preparedness guide. It'll do a lot of what the other two guides will do, and it will show you what you can do to be prepared, how you stay informed and how you stay ready. A lot of the being prepared though, is, is an individual thing. The example, one of the examples is if you have, if you have medication that needs to be refrigerated, you know, what are you going to do? If you have medication that needs to be refrigerated and the power goes out, how long can you keep it? Do you have a backup plan for power? What, what are you going to do? And so I hope, you know, I wish that every time we turn the light switch on, the lights would come on. But the reality is that's not the playing field we're living on right now. And what I hope is that if anything, these 30 or 40 power outages that we went through over the summer have taught us that we need to be a little bit more prepared, especially if we have unique needs. So not to beat that, that too much, but we've got a good opportunity for you coming up. We've got the citizens academy coming up. It starts October 4th. You can go to our website and download the application, sign up and we will, we will be going for seven weeks beyond that. Two weekends we'll be going out and one exciting thing, and we just solidified it is we're going to bring back the jail tours. So the sheriff's office, the assistant sheriff that works over the jail has reopened the jail in a limited capacity so that we could do jail tours. And like every other part of the citizens academy, it provides a very good look into the services that law enforcement provides. A lot of times the people that I would bring through the jail, we would actually ask an inmate if they would want to talk. And they would talk and kind of explain while they're, why they're there and what brought them there and whatnot. So it can actually be a very, very fulfilling experience. You actually get to see how clean the jail is, how nice it is. Not that anyone would want to go to jail for any amount of time, but it is a humane place where people are treated with dignity and respect. All right, let's move on to crime, communitycrimeapp.com. You can go and you can set up alerts. You can see what's going on in your area. You can also get Megan's Law or Sexual Offender Registry information there as well. It's uploaded several times a day for collisions. We had two injury collisions. The first one was the 1600 block of Fountain Springs Circle. This was a, a car that appeared to be backing out of a driveway and ran into a child on a bicycle. Scrapes and bumps and bruises, that sort of thing. On September 3rd, there was an injury collision. This was the one on Sycamore Valley Road at the I-680 overpass. And what I hope is, because that was a pretty, that was a bad accident. That was not a good accident. There were, anytime there's two cars that connect each other in a T-bone, those are, those tend to be some of the accidents that, that are the worst, right? If we get, you know, a lot of the rear end collisions, at least you have a bulk of the car that can absorb a lot of that energy. On the communication, we always tell you that we will put information out via Nixle. So we'll jump on the phone and we'll make sure that you know that there's a road closure and then it's going to be closed. And I hope that all of you watching have signed up. And if you, if you haven't signed up, but encourage others to, and let them know the value in it, that you knew that the area of Sycamore right at I-680 was closed and so you avoided the area. And so you didn't get caught in the snarl of traffic. But to be honest with you, there really wasn't much in the way of traffic on that. And I think I'm hoping it's because we do put those Nixle alerts out and people know to stay clear of the area. All right, crime. So this is going to be an interesting one because you're going to see more marks on the map than there were crime. So all the way to the right, the, the brown bag, that's actually the east side of Danville. That's in the unincorporated area. And so we don't, we don't respond or report on that. We actually only had two thefts and one vehicle theft, although you'll see four marks on there. The crime that actually occurred is in the kind of Camino Task Cro Canyon area. And the one that's in the center of the screen didn't actually occur. And this does happen from time to time, and that's how our numbers can be off by one or two each week. But on the 28th, we did receive a report that, that a vehicle on Old Orchard had had some property stolen. A few days later, the, the owner of the property actually found the property. And, and it turned out that there was no theft at all. It just, he believed there was a theft because he wasn't able to locate his property right away. So we, we had three thefts at the, at the end of the week. And after we received that call, it actually knocked it down to two. Now, the actual crime that, that was committed on the third, we had a theft of a vehicle on Country Hills Court. And it was an Audi that was recovered in Fremont. And I'm going to play a video, we played it probably about a year ago, but I'll play it again. That talks about specific to Audi and the keys. So I would really love it if you have an Audi, if you know someone that has an Audi, please forward this to, to anyone that you know with an Audi, because it's very, very important information and it can keep them from getting their car stolen. On the third, we also had a theft of property from a vehicle on Jasmine Court. And then on the third, we also had a theft of property from a vehicle on Stetson Court. Now, one of the things, it's quite possible that the same person or group committed all three of those crimes on the same day. And that shows you kind of the power of, or the effect that one criminal or criminal group can have when they come to town. They usually don't come in, commit one crime and then they leave. They're usually rooting through several cars, going and seeing what they can find. So if we think about the crime triangle, that's our motivated offender. Our motivated offender or offenders came into town, stole a car and rooted through and stole things from two other cars. And so what we would say is we can't, or it's hard to control that. So our recommendation is if you can park your cars in an area where it's well lit, maybe even in the garage, don't leave anything in plain sight in your car. Make sure it's, it's all there. And, and if you have an Audi and I'll actually, let's just play that video. But if you have an Audi, I would recommend not, you gotta remove the valet key. And really any car, if you have a valet key and it's not typically when you buy a new car or even a used car, they'll actually give you, they'll give you your two sets of car keys and they'll give you your, your valet key, right? Well, in Audis, they typically tend to have them in the glove box or with the manual. So let's take a look at this news story. It's from, I believe it's from News Seven in Denver. Educational purposes only, so fair use applies. So we're just going to run with the whole clip here.
One body shop owner contacted Denver Seven who doesn't think this is all a coincidence. Here's Denver Seven's Gary Brode.
It doesn't take much.
You just put this against the glass. And when you push in on it, it snaps and it just shatters.
And it doesn't take long.
The car was gone and the car, the keys were still here.
Aaron Marshall owns Berg Performance, a body shop specializing in Volkswagens, Porsches, and you guessed it, Audis. In the middle of the night and in the middle of the week in late March, this happened.
They came in and took a, a center punch and walked around the Q5 that was in our lot, broke the window, reached into the glove box, found a spare key, took the car.
The video shows the thieves taking off with one of their cars, then going around to the next Audi. The process appears to be the same. Break the window, try to see if there's a spare key, and if there is, steal the car.
It seems like their only motive is to steal the car. And they're, and it's quick, you know, they went in, they break the window, they check if there's no key. You know, they either move on to the next one.
Marshall has been working on Audis since he was 14. He says they are some of the most difficult cars to steal because of the technology. Problem is there's a place for a valet key in the glove box. Marshall says sometimes your car dealer may place that extra key in the compartment. So while you may not know it's there, these thieves appear to know just where to look. Both the Denver Police Department and Adams County Sheriff's Office say they have not seen an uptick in targeted Audis, but we found out Berg Performance isn't the only one. Another body shop in Denver specializing in Audi repairs tells us off camera, they had three break-ins also last week to Audis. Three more cars were in the shop for the same reason, the right window busted out. And in each case, nothing was stolen.
The passenger side window was broken out. Nothing was taken.
Randy Simon's car was in the shop at Berg Performance when the break-ins happened.
Clicked in my mind that my wife had mentioned that a neighbor of ours also she had noticed had had their Audi vandalized, same thing, passenger side window had been broken out.
Marshall believes it's too much of a coincidence and has a warning for his customers and any car owner who will listen.
If you have a key in your glove box, take it out. There's no reason to have it.
In Denver, Gary Brode, Denver Seven.
Well, thank you to Denver Seven again. That's a good educational video. And I think it really does illustrate the point that we have to be aware of where all of our keys are. And I can tell you, I review, certainly I review all of the part one crimes. I review a lot of the other crime reports as well, sometimes vehicle tampering, things like that. And I can tell you that it is exceedingly rare, very, very rare that a car is stolen from Danville where the keys aren't either in the car, maybe hanging on a hook in the garage, but the keys themselves have to be used because of all the technology in these cars to take the car. And I can, I'll, I'll completely tell them myself, but there was a, you know, we have a car where the type of car we have, your phone is your key, right? And I have, I'm fortunate to have two phones. And I would go into the gym in the morning and there was one time where I thought, well, I'm just going to leave my, my other phone in there and I'll bring my work phone, the one that is important for me to be reachable by. Well, the problem was I had my little wallet in there. And in the wallet, I had my spare key, which is essentially like a credit card looking thing. And I left that in the center console of the car. When I got back out to the car, I realized, holy smokes, I just left the key to my car inside the car. And so very, you know, shocking for me, but it tells me that, you know, we're all capable of making mistakes, but we want to be intentional about making sure that we don't leave those crumbs behind that the, the criminals will use to, to, to take our cars. So specifically though, if you have an Audi, it's known that they will leave them in the glove box, that the dealers will. So please look for it, make sure you take it out and make sure you don't, don't leave that, that in there for them. Right. As always, if you have any questions or comments, Lou, it's great seeing you. Sue, sorry you didn't get the notice, but good seeing you as well. If you have a question or a comment, we're watching both Facebook and YouTube. You can go ahead and leave a note there and, and I'll try to answer it during the show. Okay. Every quarter I give an update to the town council. Three of them, they're small updates. And then in March, I give an annual report. So the annual report is usually fairly large and comprehensive. All of them though, can be found on the chief's website. You can go to the police chief's website and you can download them. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to cover the one I presented to the town council last night. And so you can get an idea of, of what it is that we're doing to keep Danville safe and get a good look at the crime picture. Sometimes I'm, you know, I'll get an email and, or a phone call from a resident and they'll say, hey, you didn't tell us that there were more residential burglaries. She didn't tell us that there were a spike in this certain type of crime. And, and this is our effort to try to be very transparent with all of you and let you know exactly what's happening in the town of Danville. All right. So with the crime update, this is a look at January through June, part one crimes. So this is rape, robbery, homicide, aggravated assaults, burglary, theft and vehicle theft. So let's look at the, what we call the property crimes. So all of our property crimes are up. For the first six months this year, we're at 20 burglaries. Last year we were at 18 and our 10-year average is 28.9. For theft, we're up from 86 last year to 108 this year. And we have a 10-year average of 120. Vehicle theft is the one that has exceeded both last year and the 10-year average. We've seen quite a few of those and we have those at, at 16 for the first six months of the year. And the bulk of them, we had three months where we had high numbers of thefts. And that was January, March and June. But there was a period where we had cars that were being stolen, driven to, you know, Oakland Hayward area, used in sideshows, crashed and damaged, and then left there. We were able to, now, one of the things that the Audi that I talked about that was stolen last week, we actually, it's sitting in our parking lot. One of the things that we do that not very many police departments do is if we locate the vehicle, we actually ask that it not be, be touched or moved or anything. We will tow it back to the police department and we process it for evidence to include DNA. And so a lot of agencies will use DNA when you're talking about violent crimes, but Danville will use it. If it, if we can help solve a crime, we're going to use it. We've used it on cases recently for catalytic converter theft, where we were able to identify the suspect based on a cigarette, but that was left underneath the car where the catalytic converter was cut off. So we will use technology, we will use advanced techniques to solve crimes because we believe that if we can solve the crime, we're preventing all those future crimes and it's a, it's a good investment for us. So vehicle thefts are up, but we do take a very aggressive approach to it. The last few months, we haven't seen quite as many, but there, there were groups of teens, juveniles that would come over and steal the cars. And if you remember, I think about a month ago on the show, I talked about a, a three-vehicle pursuit that one of our officers got in. Ultimately that, that ended up netting a couple of arrests, a couple of recovered stolen vehicles. And we were able to keep those juveniles in custody. And, and so that's a win for us. And that means that they're not taking more of our cars. All right. So let's look at the violent crime. And this is the one that frankly is, is concerning, but I, I think I can provide a little bit of context. Homicides and rapes. Now remember this is looking at January through June. I know we had a horrific double homicide back in July, August timeframe. But for January through June, we had zero homicides, zero rapes, two robberies, which is right on par with last year and below the 10-year average. But we had nine aggravated assaults. That's more than we've had in the last 10 years. And that's more than the 10-year average, more than the two we had last year. In fact, if you look at last year, we only had 10 total part one violent crimes. And we have 11 right now for January through June. So we're on pace to double where we were at last year, which is pretty significant. Well, anytime we get a spike in crime, we try to look and determine what the problem is and see if we can come up with good solutions to fix it. Good example is 2010, 2011, we had a spike in violent crimes. So it's outside this 10-year average. So we had a spike in aggravated assaults. And when we looked at the data, it was showing us that those crimes were actually occurring in our downtown corridor at night on Fridays and Saturday nights, like exclusively. Well, knowing that, we just stationed officers down there. And so we had them out on foot and we had them in the area. And, and we made sure that, that we were, were present and it, we saw a sharp decline. We also engaged the, the business owners and we talked to them about what the problem is, what we felt some recommended solutions were, you know, don't over serve, those sort of things, and just really keep an eye out and, and call us. You know, if you see someone that's getting out of hand, if you see someone that's fighting, get us in the area. Well, in this particular case, we looked at, we looked at each one of the crimes and we tried to see if there was a pattern. And frankly, there wasn't. And Kimberly has a, an interesting comment. She says, good evening, evening chief. Did most of the assaults happen at Costco? A couple of them did, two of them over parking spots. And if you remember, one of them hit the news pretty hard. And ultimately the DA did not file charges. In fact, of the nine cases, of the nine, of the nine felony assaults, we've solved all but one of them. That doesn't mean that the DA filed charges on him. It just means that we've clearly identified who the person is. There's enough evidence to prove what happened and it's out of our control as to whether or not it gets filed. Doesn't mean that the DA, DA's office made a bad decision. It simply means there wasn't enough evidence to charge one person. And I think what happens with these assaults, sometimes we look at, generally speaking, not speaking about one specific case, but simply the person losing a fight may not necessarily be an innocent, uninvolved party, right? They may have contributed to this. And a lot of times what we see in these aggravated assaults is we see like co-escalation of force. So we see someone maybe offends someone and then this person gets more offended. And they just keep ratcheting it up until suddenly now we're at the stage of violence. And then sometimes that violence gets out of hand and it becomes a felony. That's what we saw with most of these. Some of them were at parties and there was, you know, alcohol and minors and, and things would get out of hand. And, and you know, at one point there was a, you know, a big fight at one of them. And it was all predictable events, right? The parking lot, we had two in the parking lot. One was where a lady punched another lady in the nose, ended up causing significant injuries, resulted in a felony. Some of them were, were family violence. We had one where a son stabbed his father or attempted to stab his father with a knife and threatened to kill him. That was, if you remember, we had a Nixle out on that. We had a lot of information that was going out on that because it was a pretty kind of public event at that point. We were able to file charges against the son on that one. We had another son who attacked his stepmother with a sword. Again, we responded, arrested the kid, filed charges on him. So some of those are, there's no, like domestic violence doesn't necessarily have a pattern. It may have a pattern within a couple that it continues and there's a cycle. But as far as predicting where it may occur, when it may occur, that's a challenge for us. And so I think what comes out of it for us is the, the good old domestic violence advice. And when I say domestic violence, please don't just think of husband and wife arguing. This could be kids, it can be stepkids, it could be aunts and uncles living in the home. It just really means interpersonal violence between people that are known, right? This isn't a stranger attack. And so what I'd say is, especially in the time where we're seeing more mental health and more stress and more depression, if you see something, please, please let someone know. You can call 211, the crisis hotline, you can get help that way. You can call A3 anytime, anywhere, anyone. Just call someone and certainly you can, you can always call the police. Sometimes just having the police show up is a calming force, right? We get there, maybe we just separate people and talk to them and it can calm all that tension down. What happens is, is what we know is that, that cycle of interpersonal violence means, you know, there's a heightening of tension. There may be an explosion of some sort, or maybe even violence. And then it gets to the apologies and, and all the back. So just make sure, just let someone know. Let's get early intervention. One of the things that you've heard me talk about specifically on this show is we're always available and to please call us early and often. All right, I'm going to check. Oh, okay. So Dina has a question. I was going to check the chat for questions. So Dina has a question, how do we see the past innate videos I don't see on Facebook and YouTube? And I was hoping I could pull up a screen. I'm going to have to do that. I'm going to write that down. I need to be able to pull up a screen so I can navigate quickly and just demonstrate. So Dina, I'll do that. But if you go to the YouTube page and on the YouTube page, you, you go to the town of Danville page and you look under live videos, that they're all there. And sometimes I just look in the YouTube video and I search, you know, Danville 10-8 burglary. And I'll see a lot of the burglary, because it'll do a search and it'll call through and it'll get a lot of the burglary videos. But you can go directly to the live, because this is a live event. You can go directly to the live video tab, because usually it says what video, in fact, I'll do it now. Town of Danville. Okay. How about this too? For whatever reason, the town of Danville, Indiana always comes up first when I do the search. And we have more subscribers, but let's do this. If you don't, if you have a friend that hasn't ever heard or seen the show, please forward them our, our page and make sure they're subscribed to it. You know, like the video, all that kind of stuff. Let's get us up to the top. So once you go to the Danville, town of Danville, California page, the first one will be home and it'll be selected videos in there. Then you have a videos tab, shorts and live. If you go to the live, really most of what we do on 10-8, it's all live. And there's not too many other departments within the town that do live videos. So all of our 10-8 videos will be there and they're usually all titled and listed out. So that's my suggestion is just go right to the lives tab and you can see all the old videos. Or you can just search within the search box and just do town of Danville and search. All right. I'm going to check the chat again and see if there is anything. I don't see anything on YouTube, checking Facebook. Sue has a funny comment, as she usually does. So we should keep boxing gloves in our backseat or trunk. You know what I love about that comment is it, it recognizes the fact that simple arguments and disagreements, when, when there's not a reasonable voice, can often lead to that violence, right? And, and that's when we teach run, hide, fight, we teach it as avoid, deny, defend. Because avoid is, it's got a different meaning, like run and I'll give kudos to Jerry Kidd, although I can't find the book. Left of bang. So bang, if we wait for the, the bang, if we wait for the punch in the face, well, it's too late. The idea is to think so far left of that, that when the person says, hey, this is my parking spot. We say, okay, it's yours. I'll find another one, right? We've just avoided that conflict. So I love the funny, funny comment. Thanks, Sue. We should be always working to avoid those conflict. Thanks to your weekly reports with helpful tips today while shopping at Safeway. I locked my car after loading groceries and returned the car. Oh, Sarah, awesome. And, and look for it. I don't know if it's dropped yet, but our, our PIO, Jen Starnes is actually putting out this like, we're trying to get better with Instagram. So she's putting out this really cool Instagram video about. out this really cool Instagram video about locking your car. Sarah, I'll tell you, there are people that are looking in the parking lots and they're just seeing you unload your groceries and they're just waiting to take your stuff. They're waiting for the opportunity. And actually someone, I think it might've been on YouTube on last week or the week before's video, actually made a comment the following day and said, really the same thing applies at the gas station. If you're filling up your car, don't even leave something on the passenger seat. Cause while you're there pumping on the driver's side, someone might pop the passenger door, reach in, take your purse. And we've, we've seen that from time to time and we've seen it on the news. We've actually have had a friend who was sitting in a restaurant and had her purse right over the back of her chair. And so it was kind of open to the back and someone, you could see it on video, someone just reached in and pulled the wallet right out. So really, really be careful everywhere you are. And Sarah, that is perfect. So when we talk about motivated offender, that's the hard one to predict. When we talk about the location, I believe our shopping centers do really well. In fact, in that video I showed, you can see that lot has really clear sight. I mean, there, there, people can see, the trees are up high, the bushes are down low. It's a, it's a good parking lot. The other thing that we can control is the target. And so Sarah, you get an A plus because you did an absolute fantastic job of avoiding being a target. So great job. All right. I'm going to check the chat again. YouTube, Facebook. I don't see it, but let's, let's remind everybody, if you, if you like this 15 or 20 minute show that we do, and this is engaging and enjoyable, I think you're really going to like the Citizens Academy. And I would encourage everyone, come join. We've got extra space now. It's going to start October 4th. So you've got just a little under a month to sign up for this. And I'll tell you, it is absolutely a lot of fun. So please come join us. And there is a link on our website to the application. Download the FEMA All Hazards Guide. This has a way for you to be prepared for those catastrophic events. Sign up for a community warning system. This is your notification along with Nixle that something bad is happening. Download the wildfire preparedness guide. And the new one is go to the PG&E website. I, I had not personally been to the portal and it was actually probably because it's been made more recently. The, the information is almost exactly the same, but it's just packaged in a different way. And even though I present on this information, I teach on this information in classes, I'm immersed in it. I still found it enjoyable to go to PG&E's website, look at their page and kind of go through it. And I took things away from it. So I would encourage you very much, when you're done watching the show, go down in the description, click the PG&E site and just check it out. I really love how not only do they say, okay, your power's out now, what? But then they had a separate block of information for, for our older population, you know, things that you might want to consider. And so it was a really good page, really enjoyed it. And if you want to stay informed, you can also opt in for information there. So Sue says, I liked it when Costco had a security guard in the parking lot. It was a good deterrent. So Sue, they do still occasionally have the visible security guard, but one of the things that we've been benefiting from quite a bit is they have loss prevention there all the time. And it's a retired or former deputy sheriff. He's, he's a, he's good at what he does. He works with his team. They're the ones that give us all these, this good video that we get. They're the ones that give us video. They're working at getting more. But they do work hard to, and they even redesigned their front. And I don't know if you, sorry about that. They redesigned their front a few years back to have separate exits and entrances. So a lot of those little things that they've done have actually helped reduce some of the crime that was happening right there at the front. The, the violence part, interpersonal violence and the theft that's happening out in the parking lot. Frankly, it's a tougher one to, to crack. And we are working on some strategies on that with them. All right. That looks like it's all. We are 10-10, which means we're off duty, but we're always 10-8 and serviced all of you. Thank you for joining us. And please share this, especially on YouTube and Facebook. Share it over to your friends. Make sure you're subscribed, like the page, click the little thumbs up button and, and I'll see you next week. Have a good day, Danville.